Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, October 22, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. About the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone? Oops. Morganstein?
Here.
Chertelle?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
And Chairman Savoni?
Here.
On to item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is passed. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. Back?
Bill Comerford, property drive. I was here on April 10th of this past year asking about the condition of the cemetery building known as 5860 Prince Street, and the dimples are the defective material. Mayor, do you have an update with that?
When you called, as I told you, I don't have the report. The report that was written by representative of the manufacturer went to the contractor who did the work. There is an indication that settlement is being discussed, but that's all the information I have.
Can you explain what you mean settlement?
Settlement regarding any claim that there it was either defective or that it was installed improperly.
Okay, so you don't know if it was defective or if it was not properly installed?
I'm not going to offer opinion because I have nothing in writing to refer to.
Okay, so from what I gather with the town charter, you're in charge of Public Works. It's a building that's owned by Public Works, but you don't have any paperwork. You don't have that report that you said you should have sometime in October. You said the contractor might have something?
I expected the warranty review undertaken by the manufacturer would be provided to the town. They did not provide it to us. They provided their findings to the contractor. Technically, they their contract, he using their materials, that is a relationship that is primary there. The town really doesn't have, to my knowledge, a contract with the manufacturer. So they're in discussions and ultimately will be pulled into the discussion, but that's all the information I have now.
Okay, so I'm kind of confused because I brought this up and at the last meeting, I showed a picture that was, I believe, in the possession of the planning or Don Rose office, planning department, and I believe was taken on behalf of Janus Mall Corporation Council, and those dings of dimples were in that same picture that was three months after the closure of the project. Matter of fact, I think if anybody took the time, went up there, I think you signed the paperwork saying that was all closed out and that it was 100% complete. So those dimples were there three months after the project closed, which was September 30, I believe, 2016. And within that, it states from the person that you're referencing, I believe his name was Dan Smith, it says, "We hereby warranty guaranteed for a period of one year with longer if required by the project specifications from the date of substantial completion. Should any defects occur during the warranty period as defined above due to improper materials, workmanship, or arrangement, the same shall upon written notice be made good by the contractor without expenses to the owner." Point is, three years went by. So I'm not an attorney. Maybe Mr. Farrell or Attorney Farrell can answer this, but clearly the warranty already elapsed. I asked you before Mr. McCully had retired if you were going to ask him to get involved, go down and look at that because he clearly was involved with this project for the two and a half years while these dimples just sat there idle. And I'm sure that there's more issues with it. And my next question would be, who did you, why did you ask the cemetery to get involved with it?
Cemetery Association is utilizing the building.
But they don't own the building. It's owned by the Public Works.
But that's at my discretion, is it not? They were in charge of the building. They could determine whether it's a cosmetic or a structural issue and begin to solve whatever questions might exist. So certainly they would be in touch with Public Works as well. I mean, this is not rocket science.
Clearly, but they had three years to bring it up, but no one did. Did you feel, did you feel that you put them in any type of strenuous circumstances by asking them to get involved?
I moved with the appropriate information, and we are now in the process of resolving whatever the problem might be. I don't see where there's an issue here.
So you, as the top, I'm going to call boss of Public Works, did you ask Mr. McCully or did you circumvent that and go directly to the cemetery?
I certainly spoke to Mr. McCully.
And what did Mr. McCully say?
I also spoke with Cemetery Association.
What did Mr. McCully say?
It's irrelevant.
So all the-
I don't recall at this point, but you know, he was concerned about it. The Cemetery Association was concerned about it. Ultimately Cemetery Association filed a claim with the manufacturer.
The Cemetery-
The result of that was their representative came, took a look at the work that was done, and went off to write a report. I expected we would get the report. They sent their report to the contractor, and as I just stated, it now is in the process of discussions with regarding settlement. So clearly, hopefully we'll have news as soon as possible, but that's where it is.
Mr. Comerford, you're entitled to three minutes, and you've had six.
Can I make one more statement, please? And I want to hand this over to the town clerk. This is an email from one of the members of the Cemetery Association. It's only one sentence. Mike, and that's the representative from certain tweet. "I'm doing the best as well as you are. I have many people coming here for this meeting, many political people. Please understand my plight. I'm counting on your comments." So clearly, somebody felt that they had plight when it came to this project, and it's not Public Works. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gross?
Good evening, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I have a question on the pension fund. I don't know if anybody can answer. Do we know how we pick the funds for the pension fund?
I think that's a great question for the Pension Commission.
I have, but who, do you guys have any input into that? Because if you look at the funds that we have, I know when the last time they changed them, they had our investment people come and presented us, meaning the town, with certain stocks or certain mutual funds to pick from. But I guess we're going to fall on deaf ears here. We're going to have no idea how those particular funds are picked. How are they presented to us? Do you guys even care? Oh, he's here. No, I'll pause.
Well, Mr. Bose has just arrived and-
I'll pause. Perfect.
And perhaps he can answer your question, Mr. Bose.
Thank you.
Jim, the question is how the pension funds are chosen?
How the pension funds are chosen by recommendation of our investment consultant, fixed fee consultant, that meets the parameters of our investment policy statement.
So you, so you give them the parameters that you want, and they come back to you with certain funds?
Yes, that's, it works in both directions, but yes, in a nutshell.
Do you know if these funds have any financial benefit to the company that's presenting them to us?
To my knowledge, no. They're a fixed fee provider. They don't get a commission based upon the placement of any funds in any particular investment options.
Because there is a big issue with Wall Street that there is placement of funds. It's called pay for play. And what you do is, it could be BlackRock, it could be Fidelity, it could be whoever, but if you're an investment company, if you want to be on their platform, you need to provide them with money to be on their platform. It gives you access to, and I'm not saying they do it, I'm just saying this is how it works. And so it gives them access to us, meaning Wallingford, who has sizable amount of money to invest. So you're sure that that doesn't happen, or you don't know?
To my knowledge, right now, sitting here, there is no such arrangement.
Okay, it'd be interesting if, because I remember, oh, the person before, at budget time, that I suggested that there's potentially, we should look at all the fees that are involved in these funds. What happens is they pay, we'll use BlackRock as an example, they might pay a big company, we'll call them XYZ, $20 million to be on their platform. But because they have billions of dollars that they want to grab from everybody, all it adds to them is you end up paying the fees to the company that you're dealing with a small amount. But that small amount to us, meaning Wallingford, adds substantial amount of dollars that we could be investing. It hits our returns, so we don't beat the S and P or we don't beat the averages. And that's why, again, indexing is the way to go. You cannot beat indexing. I just hope, and I'm not saying this particular company does it, we haven't even named them, I'm just saying that I hope the council will take it upon them to at least see if it is happening.
We can arrange a visit with the Pension Commission again. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Pension Commission, they might not be aware of it.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, we'll close the public question and answer period and move along to item six. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the contract with the IAFF Local 1326 fire as presented.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Hutown, HR Director.
Good evening, Richard Higard, Fire Chief.
Steve Elsop, Tubby Fire Chief.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Yes, we're here tonight to seek your approval for a three-year contract with Local 1326 of the International Association of Firefighters. The contract would run from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. The major provisions of the agreement is wages 175 in the first year, 2% in the second year, 2% in the third year. There's an increase in on-call pay for employees in the Fire Prevention Bureau, as well as individuals who fill in for chief officers. There's a uniform allowance increase from $300 to $400 for employees who are promoted. Amends the manpower language to 13 firefighters, to EMTs assigned to the ambulance, and the EMT pension plan, the cash balance plan that the council has already approved, similar to the 1183 bargaining unit. There's a paramedic bonus increase for $250 in the first year, 200 in the second, 200 in the third, and various other changes to the health insurance plan effective July 1, 2021, when the cost share increases to 14%. And there's an RX copay following once deductible is met. So with that, I'll, you know, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
You know, I have to admit, when I saw the item on the agenda, and I didn't have the contract, I had anticipated a battle that we've had for many meetings over many years, over the, what we now call the Janus language. And I, last Thursday night, I said, "I'm going to go find some law." And I spent about 10 hours that night. And then I got the contract. And I liked the language. So thank you for, you know, that legal research. It was a great exercise, and hopefully we never have to have that argument again. I wanted to talk about the, and I think it's on page 5, 6, the EMS situation here. Page 6 is a portion of it, I guess. And I'd like to know what the present is and what the future is with the EMS situation under this contract. So I don't know who-
Sure. The basic makeup here is that we've shifted the labor cost and the job description. So the people that will be driving and operating in the ambulance are EMTs. They're not firefighters. What this has done for us with a lengthy conversation with the union, working together with the town, we've been able to come up with a labor that is appropriate to the jobs that are actually being done. We needed more firefighters, which this accomplishes. We also need the appropriate staff on the ambulances while still maintaining paramedicine within the fire department. So this brings the operational cost to run two ambulances 24 hours a day down because we have an appropriate EMT staffing that truck. So this language, although the minimum that you're referring to is 13 firefighters and two EMTs, we intend to staff four EMTs per every working shift, allowing two ambulances to be on the road.
So it will allow for employment of more individuals at a lower rate?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
And that's where the cash balance pension comes in, because it's a different pension for that working group as well.
Okay, so it, you know, not only wages are affected, but the pension is affected, therefore?
Correct.
Okay. So then, the portion of this that jumped out at me is on page 6, and it says probationary period is for one year, and during the probationary period of any such employee, the fire chief may terminate the employee, the employment of such employee without recourse to the grievance and arbitration provisions of this agreement. So does that mean that, is cause automatically part of that, or you can just terminate, because it doesn't say that, you know, can terminate for cause, which is usually what we see in an employment contract. You know, they can't meet the specifications of doing the job. They made some bad mistake or something like that. The way I read this is you can just, because you're having a bad day, with all due respect, I mean, because there's no gatekeeper, you can terminate someone and they have no recourse for a grievance or an arbitration. Am I reading that incorrectly?
I'll defer to Mr. Hut.
That's correct. So if you go to page 3 of the agreement, it specifies who's, who is entitled to just cause under the contract. It says, "No regular, non-probationary employee covered by this agreement shall be removed, dismissed, discharged, suspended, fine reduced, except for just cause." So probationary employees have no right to the grievance procedure to dispute their termination.
And I, I mean, I guess I can assume the union agreed to that, because we wouldn't be sitting here.
Yes, that, that language, if I can reference you to that, if you go back to page 5, the last paragraph of section 1A, that language exists already in the contract for current firefighters. So that's just language that we moved over for the EMTs.
Yeah, no, I recognize that, but when we create this new class, essentially is what we're doing, we sort of start fresh, you know, and I just thought it was unusual. Okay, I mean, I look forward to, you know, maybe somebody from, you know, one of the actual firefighters that is on the other side of this contract, you know, we come to the microphone when they have the opportunity to tell us why we should be in favor of this. I look forward to perhaps that happening. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Chertelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I too want to thank you for including that Janus language, because you've shortened this meeting by about an hour. So I do have a question on, I have a question in a comment. I'll be brief. Page 22, I think this is, I think it's language, section 5, so it's section 4, sorry. If the town reasonably, it's section 5, if the town reasonably determines the total cost of a group health plan, it's in blue, it's new language. I'm assuming that's your Cadillac tax?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought. Is this new, or has this been-
It's a revised language. If you look at the red, section 5 below it, it's amended language.
Got it. And my only comment, I'm going to vote for it, so I don't have a problem with the whole contract. My comment is just a strategic one in general, though I am concerned, if you go to page 19, and it's the same thing I always bring up, it's the coinsurance. We have 0% coinsurance. I just think that, not, not specific to this contract, in every contract we look at, I do think in our next, as we start cycling through, we really got to start looking at that coinsurance. And, you know, in the private sector, that is not zero. And again, I get it, it's collective bargaining, you win, you know, it's a whole puzzle, and it's, that's just one aspect. But that's just a comment.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So in this contract, or as a result of it, and I think you've highlighted this to some extent, am I correct to understand that we're now going to have two operating ambulances in town 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
That's correct, as well as additional firefighting staffing, which was critical in our desire to cover the town in an appropriate manner.
And the bargaining unit embraced this?
Yes, yes. This was a cooperative effort, and a lot of people worked hard at coming up with this language.
Well, I think that in and of itself accomplishes a lot of the town's public safety goals that we've been hearing about virtually as long as I've been on the council. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank the representatives in the room. There's at least a dozen firefighters in here, and it's pretty uncommon that we have this many members of a bargaining unit show up to appear in support, at least, I think, of the agreement that's been presented to us. So I want to commend both sides. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council, comments from the public?
I just, I want to make sure that all is understood. We are supportive of this administratively. This is a good direction to go, but the additional manpower will cost an additional $324,000. And then obviously wage increases occur on top of that. So I just don't want anyone to think that we've lowered the cost of the ambulance, and that's a lowered cost in general. There is an additional cost.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And it's certainly valid to point out. Counselor Morganstein?
Thank you. So we're basically rearranging how things are done. You told us a term of this model being some sort of a West Coast working model that you've studied and talked with people and found will work. $320,000 for the safety of our public is clearly important. And I hear that the agreement to this was pretty strong. There are other sides to these things, health insurance and such. So I hope that, again, these guys being in the room, guys, gals, I hope there's some gals too, are, you know, here to serve us, and we in our capacity to serve them as well. A question that I have with this reconfiguring, we know that a large majority of the need from our rescue service is medical at this point. If we were to have a repeat of the fire that was at Choate, and it were not change of shift, where you basically had two sets of the firefighters right, ready there, with this model, if we were to have something like that, I know there's some, you know, we get help from other towns and such, but how does this model help us in the extreme? Because of course, you set a model based on mostly what happens, and then you have a little, hopefully wiggle room for the worst case scenario. What about the worst than worst case scenario? What are our safety nets?
Sure. No department is staffed for the worst case scenario. It's just, it's not realistic, it's not affordable. What this contract does for us is essentially, we had 12 people, minimum manpower in the past, the previous contract, and of those 12, two were assigned to an ambulance. We staffed additional people as appropriate, but that meant there was only really 10 firefighters. This contract has 13. What that allows us to do is the pickup truck, the rescue that we've talked about in the past, that is now going to be a fire apparatus with the paramedic on it, with, fully staffed with firefighters. That gives us three pumpers, where right now we only have two. So that gives us much quicker response into neighborhoods and covers the town better. So if one piece is tied up, we still have two active pumpers. In the past, we tied up one on the highway, on the Merritt Parkway, we're down to only one staffed pumper covering the town. So an essential part of this was to give additional firefighting staff on fire apparatus. That was critical, and that was a work in progress to get where we are. We will be doing mutual aid still. That is an appropriate response. One of the concerns, when we were covering Meriden and the expectation that they cover us or North Haven, we would drop from the two career pumpers down to one. So we're covering again the town with only one staffed piece. When we have three, we send one to a neighboring community, we still have two. So that's the essential function of this new agreement, is that we have better firefighting capability. They're staffed on those trucks. Yes, on the medical side, they still do paramedicine. This is clearly, it's a step in the right direction. It's a complete reset. It's not the end. If our calls trend in a different way, or continue trending the way they are now, we're going to need additional support later on. This is not a finality. But this is a very solid reset to get the trucks on the road and staffed on both sides of the tracks, east and west side is challenged with the railroad activity and whatnot. So again, we had a lot of lengthy conversations, watching standards to see how they wanted our coverage, and that's all reflected in the product that you see in front of you.
And are we currently up to snuff in our truck equipment? Can we be expecting to see more in that direction as well?
Yes, a couple of gen items from now, we'll be talking about that, yes. We have one that we're looking to purchase, and that's, that's already funded, if you will, but we have to have that conversation still.
Thank you.
Anything else? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Unanimously. I think that's the first time a contract is passed unanimously since I've been on the council. Nice work. Thank you much.
Thank you.
On to item 7. Can we have a motion?
I move we approve the new job description for EMT.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. What have you for us?
Uh, this is a, uh, this is an outflow of the contract you just approved, so we need this job description in order to start the recruiting and the hiring process once it's time. And we request your approval.
Questions from the council? Testa?
Chief? Chief. Do you anticipate this being a, I guess, part of the pathway, if you will, to further training and development among, among staff members?
Absolutely. This is a great way to recruit firefighter medics. Uh, it gets us in, into our system. Uh, introduces them, introduces them to the EMS work that they, they're interested in, but it is definitely a pathway to get to the firefighting ranks. Uh, we, we hope that's for not all the employees. There's some that would want to settle in at this position, but we're hoping to use this as a springboard or farm team.
Well, do you find most, many times someone is, is trained and gone through EMT training and with the goal of perhaps going further to become paramedic?
Absolutely.
So this seems like it would be a really nice?
Yes.
Nice path. You find it, it's a, it's, it's an opening for volunteer, potentially?
Yep, it's another opportunity for volunteers to get on a career department, hopefully ours. So it's a pathway to, to again, get an entry level job and then progress in their training and, and move up through the ranks. Yes.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chertel.
I, I just have one question, and it's more of a broader question, but I'm going to keep it related to this agenda item because I'm being stared at by the chairman, so I want to make sure I'm compliant with FOI. This person could be responsible for something. My question is, uh, a non-emergency number for the fire department, is that something you've looked into and, because it feels like it would fall under this person's job description? So the police have a non-emergency number. So if you see something, a traffic light that's out or something, you can, you don't have to call nine-one-one, you can call the number. And I ask that because I actually had a situation at my house a year and a half ago where it wasn't an emergency, but I really needed to talk to someone from the fire department, and I had to call nine-one, basically, I called the non, the non-emergency police number to get patched through to.
It's one in the same. Our dispatch center is the police department, so the two-nine-four-two-eight-hundred is the non-emergency number for both fire and EMS.
So that's good. So it all links to the same.
One number for.
Okay.
Yep.
Looks good. Thank you.
Now you can get an EMT on a non-emergency basis. First letter in EMT is E. I'm just pointing that out. Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Counselor Zandry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, it, it just, it was something that just bubbled up last minute. Just, I have a question on this, and with, with respect to the rate that you're, you're putting on this, there's a range there. I, I'm going to make the assumption that you'll have to come back with this as minimum wage gets too close to that to push this up. This is a skilled job, even if it's entry level, even if it's introductory. So I, I assume that you'll come back in a couple of years to, to reset that. So, and I, I would actually encourage you to do that because again, the, the idea here is that with, with a skilled job, you're trying to bring people in and move them up, whether they come in from volunteer or look to progress to do something else. And you got to make it a little bit more attractive than, I don't know, shoveling snow. So, you know, I mean, you know, part, people that have part-time jobs doing, doing regular labor type things are going to be right behind this job. And so I want to make sure that we've got this scaled. It's scaled appropriately now because we're still doing the monthly, the yearly jumps by a dollar. But I want to make sure that we're, that we're looking at this proactively so that we can, with come budget time, be able to address it.
We absolutely will.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't go too far. And thank you, Mr. Hut. You're all set.
Thank you.
Onto item eight.
I move we a, approve a bid waiver to become a member of a national purchasing collaborative, Sourcewell, to allow the purchase of equipment from WI Clark, as previously bid.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is the Public Works matter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Counselors. Rob Boltramides, Public Works Director, and with me, the huggable Steve Palermo, our form, uh, superintendent, who made the form and joke a couple of times today. Um, good evening. So we are here seeking your support and your approval to waive our normal bid process. Kind of have a little bit of a story to tell. So, um, my predecessor had recognized the need to, um, make a purchase of a new loader backhoe, piece of heavy equipment. Uh, you probably all know what it is. It's a rubber tired machine, scooper bucket in the front, excavator, trenching bucket in the back, very versatile. Um, we presently have two machines with five crew leaders. Our two backhoes are out on the street, I would say essentially daily, but they're, they're aging, there's a need to replace and start moving equipment in and equipment out. Um, and, and with that, my predecessor had established the department budget, um, for, for last year. And we went out to bid, uh, for a machine, uh, for certain technical specifications. That was public bid eighteen oh sixty-eight. It was put out, it was opened, and what we found was we, quite frankly, we didn't have enough money. We had a hundred and sixty thousand dollars budgeted. Um, the successful bidder for that, um, supplying that equipment was WI Clark Company right here in Wallingford. Piece of equipment was a John Deere seven-ten Model L backhoe. It was two hundred and six thousand dollars. The delta was forty-six thousand over the budget. Winter came, my predecessor retired. I also recognized the need to bring this piece of equipment into our fleet, so I picked it up from that point. And what we learned is that if we join and we are a member of one of many, um, national purchasing collaboratives, that we can purchase the same identical machine for significantly less money. The real irony here is that machine would also come from WI Clark because they are this purchasing collaborative distributor here in Connecticut. And our relationship and purchase order is with WI Clark for thirty thousand dollars less money. So, um, the one-seventy-six range where a hundred and sixty is budgeted, and that's why you'll see that there's, uh, an item following this. If we're successful in getting your approval on the bid waiver, we are asking for a transfer contingency to that account, uh, to fund the balance. I, I have to use the word no-brainer. We're getting the identical machine at thirty thousand dollars less from the same vendor of our public bid process, but only by being a member of, so this is called Sourcewell, the purchasing collaborative. Um, we are already a member. There are no other fees. There's no member to, um, membership to join. Um, the one question I had is how do, how do these collaboratives get paid? And, and the bottom line is the vendors pay small administrative fees and they, they do it on volume. You know, I, I have to make the analogy of, um, you know, if you were making a fleet vehicle purchase, the dealer is going to be able to buy it from the manufacturer cheaper than a retail car because they're, they're dealing in, in bulk. Um, and that's really the summary of the presentation. Hope to get your support on this item. We're both here for any questions.
So you're sure it's not going to show up at Public Works missing one of the shovels?
I was asked that question and, um, you know, I, I read their proposal, WI Clark's proposal through the collaborative, and, um, it is, the machine is delivered, ready to go. And I, I would say it's not ready to go if it's missing tires and, and buckets.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Can we identify any future applications for this Sourcewell collaborative already, or we're, right now we're just doing this and then maybe in the future we'll look at it?
Uh, speaking for this department, um, this is the only one we're looking at right now. Um, and like I said, I have the, I have the benefit of actually having a public bid to see how this was fifteen percent less. Um, it, it's certainly, you know, in the, um, public purchasing arena, this certainly raises my eyebrow to look at it for, um, you know, more purchases in the future, but right, right now it's just this one. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So, Rob, you mentioned that we're already part of the collaborative, and when did we become part of the collaborative?
Well, I, um, I took that initiative on my own, um, going to their website and, and simply filling out information as the Director of Public Works, um, and was, was assigned a membership number, again, at, at no fee.
There's no fee?
Absolutely no fee.
So, why, if you know, why wouldn't this, why didn't this collaborative bid on this project?
I think that's a great question, and we've had discussions with our purchasing agent if we should include, um, language in our regular bids to allow vendors to, um, bid an alternate to say, hey, if you were part of this collaborative, we could deduct this value from our bid proposal.
Or why wouldn't the, why couldn't Sourcewell itself bid?
Well, well, they don't bid because they're not providing it to us. Sourcewell essentially is, um, and I familiarized myself with them. They are actually a government agency. It is in the state of Minnesota, and they do this across the country. But they're technically a government agency. They have their own procurement process that's very similar to ours where they will advertise that they're receiving bids and they'll do it, you know, across the country in, um, in, in large national newspapers. Um, they will put the advertisement on, um, you know, states across the country on their, their Department of Administrative Services pages. So, they, they try to get out there across the nation to solicit these bids, and they have a public opening process, just, just like we would.
And how did this ability come to your attention?
Um, it came to my attention actually from WI Clark. Um, because I, quite honestly, I think they saw the potential of, of losing a sale with that delta of being forty-six thousand dollars. They suggested you may want to look into this.
All right. So we inquired, then we said, well, we couldn't do that because we don't have the money. They said, well, if you do this thing, maybe you can get it within your number.
Perhaps.
Okay. Uh, that makes sense. The, um, did you have, I mean, you took the initiative to sign up, and I know many times you sat there and said, I'm not a lawyer and not going to answer those questions. Did you have somebody from the law department review whatever you, whatever agreement you locked us into to become part of this, to make sure there are no ties?
I am not a lawyer. Um, candidly, I, I did not, um, but if anything, I, I locked myself into it as the Director of Public Works.
So you're personally liable?
I was the member who filled it out.
Okay. Well, once again, you're not a lawyer, so I don't know that that gets you to personal liability. But, um, okay, thank you. Thank you, law chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a, an intriguing process. Um, you, you had mentioned when you first started that there's other collaboratives like this. So, you know, during a bid process, what would, or, or some point in the bid process, you know, what, why couldn't you go to other ones to find out, you know, this, this one is, is twenty-nine thousand dollars less, but in that Sourcewell, but what if ABC is even less? I mean, I, how do, how do you sort that out, or how, how would you go about that?
Sounds like there'd be an awful lot of legwork because I think there is, um, no less than dozens and dozens of these collaboratives across the country. Um, I, I think, I think the best way to do that and get that vetted out for ourselves is again, um, if the purchasing agent, um, agrees to it, is to include language to say, hey, if you're a potential bidder on our public bid, and you know that if we're a member of a collaborative and you can offer it to us less, we're going to accept that as an alternate bid and encourage, you know, that to occur through our public bidding process.
That might be something for us to take a look at then, because, you know, I, obviously, uh, the Clark Company is, is a member of, of, or however they're associated with Sourcewell, but maybe Clark isn't part of, or doesn't know about ABC or one, two, three, or whatever the other collaborative name is, and, um, you know, so it's, it, it, it just opens up a whole, whole nother possibilities here on purchasing because that's a substantial amount of money. You know, you're, you're almost.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's real dollars. So, it's, um, you know, as we go forward with this, you know, this might need some fine tuning with purchasing, but.
Yeah, I, I think that would be the, um, the most convenient way for, for us, for departments to be able to entertain and get that information from other collaboratives is to, is to put it right there in the document that we'll, you know, consider them as an alternate bid.
So with Sourcewell, what, with other type of equipment, is it, is it just the John Deere equipment or?
Oh, God, no, no. It's, it's, it's essentially every brand of, um, of heavy equipment for construction. Um, they, they service, um, government, educational, nonprofits, profits. I mean, that, that's who their membership base is. Um, and, and it's everything from, um, you know, it, it's anything that we could buy as a government, government agencies. It's, it's not just limited to construction equipment. And the construction equipment is not just limited to backhoes and/or particular models and brands.
So it's, it's pretty obvious then you'll be looking at this through, for other, other equipment, maybe some dump trucks or, or other stuff?
I mean, based on fifteen percent, I, I, I think we have to.
Yeah?
I think we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening. So, part of my questions were already answered, um, by the other counselors, but I, I, I guess I want to emphasize one point. I mean, we were, we're, you actually went through the bid process, but you've actually gotten a better price now because you've joined this collaborative. So that's really why you're asking us to waive it because they were already the low person, but we basically have to break what we did in order to get the discount. So I follow that. So, I guess my question kind of stems from what Counselor Laterno just said. In the future, when we're going out to bid, this would be part of the specs. If it's any consideration for the bidding process, you know, applicants should understand that we're a member of this collective and should bid us at this rate in order, because again, it's one of those things where procedurally, somebody else might have been able to save us forty thousand if they knew that because they got a better rate from the, the collaborative or other collaboratives that we may look at. So, I, I kind of want to emphasize the idea that in the future, as we put these things out, that we include that information. I, I guess is probably the easiest way to say that. I mean, you would agree, I imagine.
I, I would agree. I think we have the potential to save significant money on, and we purchase a lot of items.
Yeah, that we have to get anyway. So again, thank, I thank you very much. That was it.
Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Excuse me. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, actually, you're not done. Onto item nine. Can we have a motion?
I move we approve the transfer in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from the contingency account to a backhoe loader account.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So I think you talked about this, that you had budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand, and even with the collaboratives reduced price, you're this much short.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on to item ten.
I move we approve a bid waiver to enter into an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing via HGAC to obtain the best pricing for purchase of new quint-style fire apparatus.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Well, we kind of had a preview with, with the last item, um, but what's different here is that you haven't gone out to bid yet.
Correct.
So what can we expect in this situation?
So the fire department also wants a backhoe. No, uh, what, what we're looking at is with the same experience, uh, the fire service, many departments, uh, from east.
many departments from East Hartford, Meriden, Nogatuck, and various other ones have purchased fire apparatus in the same design, different consortium. We're looking at the HGAC, it's out of Texas. It's very much the same structure. And again, I know a lot of towns in Connecticut that have purchased fire equipment and fire apparatus from it and have had great experience in that process. What it is, it's basically an RFP because it's all by design. All the prices are out there, it's à la carte. Everything is public view, so it's very transparent. And it saves us many, many months of vetting, designing a bid specification, and then qualifying the bidders that they meet our bid specifications. We have a very dedicated group of firefighters and fire officers who sit on a truck committee. They come up with the bid specifications that we need. But then not every manufacturer meets those specifications. So it's an arduous process for them, which ultimately takes six months, it's time, it's money. That gets all pushed off to decide if we have the ability to go use a consortium, go to the specific apparatus manufacturer that we're looking for. Our vendor would be Five Star, which is out of Hartford. We've purchased two pumpers from the same vendor in the past. So we have a relationship with them and the manufacturer that we're looking for. We don't have the bid number like Public Works has, but we do have the same experience with other departments that they've had success in this process and it's a very transparent process. Purchasing has weighed in, they don't have an objection to it. We have not signed up for this. It is a membership that would have to be sought for by the purchasing agent. He would have to join this consortium to do this. That has not been done yet.
Okay. Do we already have in service a Quint-style fire apparatus like the one that you intend to purchase?
No, this is a brand-new concept for us. The Quint, basically, it's a Swiss Army knife of fire apparatus. We have traditionally ladder trucks and pumpers, this is a combination of the two. It does a little bit of everything, which is what we're looking for. Splitting the town, having an aerial apparatus on both sides of town. That does, this truck will do that job for us. With relocation of the ladder truck to the North Farm Station, three of our last fires, the truck company was first due on the fire. While the guys did a great job doing what they could, they didn't have water. They don't have hose and water on an aerial truck. So this gives that officer that's first due in that district some options. Again, we still have a staffed aerial, thanks to the contract that we just settled. So it's not replacing an aerial, it's just adding another resource to our toolbox.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council, Counselor Laterno?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The consortium that you've already gone through the process with the purchasing department. And you had mentioned there's, they'll have to join that consortium. Is there a fee for that, you know?
Yes, in this case, it's a $2,000 flat fee for the transaction. It doesn't matter how many, you can buy fire apparatus at one time. It's not a per transaction, it's per event. So if you buy five, it's still $2,000. This is an $800,000 purchase, so the 2,000 seems very small. But it's a transactional fee and it covers that entire transaction.
Okay, and that's for a, so once, once the purchasing signs up for this, is it for the, just for the purchase of this unit? Or is it a yearly fee or is it a?
I'll ask the chief to answer.
There's no membership fee to join. As the chief stated, it's a transaction fee. It's for each transaction. So once you sign up, you have access to all their RFPs and all their bids that are out there, well over 800.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There being no business for item 11 and no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.